On your own.
All right. We'll go ahead and call it to order the November eighteenth Spendle Meeting for Early Childhood Committee. Welcome, everyone. So, no recap needed as far as where we're going to be. Let's spend a line share of our discussion today. Thank God we have a department here. Thank you. Focusing on what our draft project plan is going to be. So we're going to be a five-month period. We are pretty not in time for this, just making sure that we make as much as possible to dig into the heart of what our public strategy is going to be in the years, hopefully more than one year to come. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from November fourth? Can I get a vote here for this?
So will.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you all. Welcome second and a third. All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Excellent. So, all of y'all received Angela's email, hopefully kind of naming where we're at as far as site visits and feedback when we participated. I thought they were extremely important this year as we have a fairly new board, not new necessarily to early childhood space, but new to this committee in terms of being boots on the ground, seeing what operationally these things look like and what path things are going to take going forward. And I hope everyone will come with a little bit of new understanding of exactly what the space looks like and the challenges that our providers are facing. It's different when you see it up close and nothing more informative than seeing the little ones smile and cry, depending on whether or not they want to be helped. So yeah, Angela, I'm happy to defer to you. Is Angela online?
Angela is online.
Angela, if you want to add anything, I'm happy to do that. Otherwise, I can run the show as far as inviting feedback from committee members and just generally open up for discussion about takeaways. Stacy, you're first, but I was. I think you might.
Quickly in your heart. On the site, since I went on, we always went during nap time. And one of the things I think we ought to ask them is to not schedule us during nap time, which I know is easiest for their administrative, but we don't get to see any interaction between staff and children. And to me, that's important. And I want to say, yeah, everyone I went to, they were napping, except for Christine. Christine.
Firearm.
Yeah. Exactly, they had a firearm, so. So, you know, that would be just something I would recommend it. And when booking those appointments.
I think that's good feedback. And maybe even my opinion, right? Making sure that if they do want to give us some work for the tour that happens during nap time, so they can show us facilities and these, and then the second half, see that organic interaction, that makes a lot of sense to me. Because we are there to kind of set, maybe that's part of the next part of our stuff as well about what funding looks like and what we're using great criteria to understand better. I'm not opposed to site visits on a fairly routine basis to say some of that everyone seems I'm more of a. I did see you raise your eyebrow back there, so we're going to talk later.
So, I read through the responses from all the site visits and I must say that it's difficult to really synthesize it. It's almost like you want to have an AI kind of overview available to really come to an understanding. And I think it just illustrates the difficulty of kind of assessing programs, assessing projects. And so, just a comment, I mean, it's very helpful to have the compilation of individual feedback. But I found it difficult to kind of synthesize that into take-home messages.
I think that's a great point. And reflecting on that, I think it's because the sites are experiencing different challenges, right? That's a part of it as well. Not only different people writing the reviews observing different things, but the site I visited too, they both seem to have distinct concerns.
I would say with me, it was not only that we saw sites, we saw different companies, we saw different.
Organizations.
Yeah, 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 different organizations.
Right.
That were, yeah. I wasn't prepared for that, knowing that it was going to be some with tour around site and then some that just provide resources. So, that one was part of my practice.
I'd say from the visits I went to, just reading that, I think to me, there were like three big buckets. I know there are lots of problems, but like, one, the theme that came up a lot is the one-year funding cycle. Really hard for folks to predict on what to do with our organizations. Because I think last year, when they didn't know if they're reading the funding, there was a lot of scrambling. And then a lot on the staffing shortages. So whether it was, you know, at AB Tech where they were having decreased enrollment in programs, folks couldn't hire people. So it was like, and then staffing everywhere. And then a lot that came up is the mental health needs, I think was another big thing.
Tremendous.
Was just that both the resources for the staff themselves to prevent burnout that already exists and then the training that the staff needs to take care of the children. So I think, I don't know, that's kind of what I.
And I want to piggyback on that as far as the mental health. I mean, the children that we're looking at now that are going into pre-K when they were infants, when they were out in public, they never saw anything but eyes. So, you know, that early development of emotional and social, I think is what's impacting a lot of the developmental issue.
You know, that, one of the comments I think I made was that every childcare center that we actually saw did state that all of their children are hitting trauma indicators. Where I went back to, I went back to some of the old reports or even some of the applications that we've had from the very beginning. And that wasn't as big an issue. I mean, there were some and at particular schools that we expected it. We had a higher incidence of treating children in impoverished areas. But not in every single center are all of the children showing trauma indicators. And that's something that we are unprepared for at this moment in time. We can't even, we couldn't handle it 10 years ago. We can't handle it now. And I think the other thing that Alan and we found out was that you've got two different needs here. You've got one, that's a systemic need, like we saw maybe with Sunshine Project and the mental health of children, which is, I think, systemic now. But then you have each center is experiencing some kind of challenge that is childcare center oriented. And how are we with our little bit of money that seemed like so much money five years ago? How are we going to handle both of those types of things? Because I think we're being asked to do both of those.
I'm not sure Stacy, I understand the difference between those two things.
Well, I think systemic would be problems in with the trauma where you've got an organization like Sunshine, which goes out to the different centers and helps children with who are having social emotional needs. That used to be, that was a small portion, but now every center has children who need those services. That's a systemic need. Every child going into every center probably at some point in time needs help. As do the teachers need help in handling it too. Got to train, got to work with the child and the family and you have to work with the teacher, two different paths to make a healthier outcome for that child. And hopefully helping with teacher burnout too. I think if they felt more comfortable with what they were dealing with. And then you have a center need, like they, their subsidy isn't covering their costs. Irene Wortham, they've got four. If they have four empty classrooms, they are losing money hand over fist. Knowing that budget as well as I do, they are, they're losing money as soon as they have one empty classroom. Sort of like an airplane. If you've got three empty seats, that airplane's losing money. So it's the same thing. And I don't know how they're making up that differential. So they, you know, it'd be interesting to check in and see if there's 20 kids showed up that they had just said that they were going to get, I think, two-year-olds, wasn't it? I think. So, you know, things like that, that are set plays for some reason and others that all of our centers are clamoring for. And how can we, and six, seven, 10, 20, $40 million might not do it.
Did you say six, seven on purpose?
I'm so with it. Yes, I did. Yeah, I did.
I think, motion to never say six, seven in this room again.
I think what I saw is coming from, you know, making these visits from the beginning. I saw a lot of positives. What's wrong with our money? It wells as net, it's that they necessarily, the centers unable to control. The positives is when we first started and visiting them, they didn't know their weaknesses and their strong points. Where now though, and I know why they see them because of the quarterly reports we're getting from them. That's helping them know what they're up against and what they need to do in a lot of cases to solve. But the big problems that I see with them, as you've mentioned, and we see the same thing with K through 12, is the trauma that our kids are facing now, not just with Halley, but from what's going on at the family at home. You know, I don't know how our teachers can help some of these kids when they come in, unfortunately. They're not trained for what they're encountering. But this is something going forward that we're going to have to deal with. And that's why I keep saying though, we're going to have to have an infusion dollars from somewhere other than just the government. We've got to get the total community involved, community involved, because we're losing these kids before they even get to kindergarten. And that's what's frightened. And we've got to do it. And unfortunately now, if you look and look beneath the covers, folks, it's just not the underprivileged kids. It's kids at all economic levels now who are having the same challenges. But there's something that we're going to have to deal. And we got to give the childcare people the, hopefully, we can give them the help that they need to do a better job or to improve. But to solve the problems that they're getting, it's no way they're going to get the people to make, to start turning this curve for us when you don't pay them anything. And that's the other. So, these are issues that we've got to deal. If not, we'll be throwing money away.
Well, and Doug Collins out in Black Mountain, who, on that, and just to, as a by-side, as a side point, a lot of their children come from MacDow County. Because people drive up the mountain, go to work, they're going to get their job. Right. Yeah. But they're doing parenting classes. I mean, we, and this is something that, as I started to think about it, we have a lot of children being born to folks regardless of their economic situation, have no clue what parenting is. Have no clue. I mean, and I look at even people that I know and I've got. And I'm a real good measure of that because I have so many children myself. So, it's, so they're not only teaching children who are in childcare, that's where they are most of the day. They have only half that amount of time at home on the weekdays. And then they're having to teach the parents too. Doug Collins is having classes every month. They call them community parent meeting. But what they're teaching are parenting skills, they're not telling them. But so that they can, the parents can undergird what they're teaching in the classroom so that it's, it's, you know, taught still at the same types of discipline and learning and things. And we have far too many homes that have no stimulus at home for books and paper and crayons and just that sort of thing. I mean, these are just little stuff that impede the success of the child.
Well, I appreciate the tremendous interest that we had in doing the site visits and everyone who was able to go. I think you can only have some of these insights if you see it up close. And to Commissioner White's point, there's a historic context to this that we, from day one to when this started, 2019 to now, every year, it seems like there's been a new challenge. Just can't catch a break, so I look forward to whatever tornado that comes our community next to go around. But the challenges aren't going to stop. So I think us being nimble about how we deploy our funds is going to continue to be important. And that's kind of the point of this. Adrian, I think you're right. I think it's really difficult to wrap your mind around what my single takeaway is for any given thing. But I think that reaffirms why what we're doing is important. This continues to be fascinating, figuring out how we deploy that money in a way that's going to move the needle. Because there's not going to be one magical strategy at this point. I've given up on that in government. It's just going to have to be responding to this, what we deal with at every level and filling what we have to want to, but.
Are we able to discuss a multi-year, get a multi-year focus and, you know, check-ins and?
She's not a plant. Yes, we can. And we are going to probably work some of that into our discussion of what focused investment could look like. I think this has come up in the past. We have discussed this for the people who have been in the room longer than myself. Multi-year has come up as not only something that we should consider, but an outright ask from some people who are sitting in this room. It makes sense in a lot of ways. I think we just have been so hesitant around the lack of clarity around what our priorities should be year in, year out, that there's been reluctance to say that. But I think it's clear at this point that certain challenges might last multiple years. And in that sense, we can kind of say these top three things might be, might benefit greatly from multi-year funding. So, some of this can come up in our focused investment portion. Any other high-level takeaways? Because I would love to spend as much time as y'all are willing to commit to our product plan and if you're going to intercept kind of nicely.
Well, just one other point that I don't agree cannot be exceptionally pet, um, evident on a store visit was under enrollment. That there appeared to be, you know, the capacity in terms of space to be enrollment more kids if you could get staff. And that kind of under enrollment means that there are many, many children in the community of the county who are just not getting a chance to benefit from the kind of responsive caregiving that they could get on the preschool or childcare. So, yeah, I think that just add that to the, to the three things that you mentioned.
I think that's fascinating because Commissioner White, I think he speaks this better than I. But tell me a part of the problem when I say that's kind of where the back and forth went between workforce development means creating more slots, means circular argument that we put ourselves in of like, we can't solve one without the other because our goal is to open slots. But the means to set goal is workforce development and creating more teachers. It just became so frustrating that every year you feel almost schizophrenic in how you're going back and forth between funding either one. And the truth is, we need to do both. But doing both halfway is kind of not result in that impact that we want to have, as best I can tell. And I say that with no shade at anything we've done in the past, you live and learn. But continued investment and trying to do one thing really, really, really well might be a path forward. So that's kind of what I'm hoping to discuss for the second part of, is that something we do and quickly walk away with the plan? I know that would make creating this slide a lot easier if we walked away with some kind of general strategy or marching orders for where we, how we want to proceed. Um, and I can firm it enough, much as we can.
How would we talk about, because the mental health being such a large issue, if that is a deterrent for people to go into early childhood and approach it from an understanding level, trying to figure out how to solve, you know? Because I know my daughter, she's 18, she just got a job in early childhood education and she's already freaking out with how she's doing. Because there are so many kids and she's just so sad. And she's like, I don't know if I can do this because there's just so many of them that need help. I just can't help them all. She's 18, she just wants to sit down and play. So, I don't know. I'm just seeing it from my daughter's standpoint.
That's, what I would just add to that is there are a lot of community programs and we have a rich resource in terms of programs to support teacher mental health and teacher training. And we know we can teach attainment to caregivers. These things are out there in our county, it's about funding. So, like, I find myself fancy to get at, like, beginning the draft project and really figuring out how do we want to focus funds? Because like, there are projects out there that support teacher mental health. There are like circle security classrooms to teach attainment, just, you know, so like, there's things to support staff retention. But like, how are we going to contribute in terms of this committee funding?
Now, what's interesting is that we talked to an early childhood professional who's been in the classroom. The reason they leave is burnout. They're exhausted. And, but what we hear from the community, from the education college and the colleges is that, well, you're not paying enough. So there's a disconnect here between providing education for our professionals from the, from the very beginning, from, what if 81, 16, still. I forget that one of these days. From the EDU classes to having someone who's actually in the classroom and what they are experiencing. And what, and it almost makes me think that part of what we're not teaching them is what they, is some of the skills that they really need in the classroom, help better and to protect themselves from emotional burnout. And then there are people, of course, who are better suited for that type of work than others. Because I, and I'm so impressed if anybody does it. But there doesn't seem to be a clear understanding of what the actual, what the professional needs. Then on the other hand, when are these teachers supposed to go and get this additional help? Because you pull one, one teacher out of the center and all of a sudden, you got to mess with your relationships. They, there's not extra people wandering around the hallways to fill those slots. Which, you know, again, has another level of stress in the, to them. But how can we make it available to these teachers? How can we pay them for that time that they are there? Because if you're going to do it after hours, then they're going to want to be paid, I can assure you. You know, and probably, and should be with professional development, it should be. So how do we do this?
I think you're asking the right question. Almost a little bit spoils the ball for us because you're, you're spot on, right? I think we, this time last year, I guess it's more than that, it was still warming up last year. We had a sit-down, very frank sit-down with our partners at AB Tech, who didn't bring them into this very room, sitting right here, asking them, what does this look like? What are you doing meaningfully? What money do you need? And what is our plan for, we address exactly what you just said. And I think what, I forgot how to say this. What has occurred to us is that we should control the things within our purview and be ready to use our money in the way that we know that it will be impacted. Even if I have good at many things, but fixing other people's systemic issues are not, is not practical for us in this committee. Maybe that means we have to have more funding to deploy it more directly in specific ways. But I, I don't want us to get lost in the faintest thought of how do we have AB Tech do something different? Or how do we work with someone else differently? Even though I might agree with you that that needs to happen in some ways. We've got what we've got right now, we have an immediate problem and you've seen this up close for years now. And it's, it is frustrating to see the writing on the wall. And we do want the people paid for professional development. So, part of what I'm hoping we can do in focused investment discussion is talking about if that really is the thing that is standing in the way of us keeping, retaining, developing a new force of teachers, then let's address that, let's get the data behind it and then support that with every dollar that we think is perfectly throw at it. But I think us just naming that priority and saying this is what we're committed to will be helpful. Just so everyone, including our partners, will know what, what it is we're going to invest tomorrow and make consumer making. So Rachel, I threw a lot out there as far as guardrails and what you tangibly need to walk away from today feeling like it's a success and you have something tangible to go on. Do you mind sharing with us?
Sure. Ready to switch from site visits to project planning?
Please.
Because I was like, yes, please. Okay. And for folks' awareness, we do have one committee member, online Pat, is joining us today.
Hi, Pat. You've got questions, go ahead and raise your hand on there, I'll be able to see it.
Okay.
Okay. So, not the last time we were taking, because that's when we had a panel, but the time before, so it would have been our October meetings. You'll recall, we were having some conversation about surveys and gathering information from different impacted groups to help inform how we proceed. I think it might have been Joe who asked a really helpful question about, how much time do we have to complete this process? And then there were a couple of other questions that asked definitely back to our desks to make up a plan specific to the community engagement piece. What we realized, we felt the need for was a larger project plan in general that would help carry us from where we are to a fully implemented focus. Should we desire, should we desire to engage in this project? And we want to have a really solid plan so that staff can support the committee in that work. And so, looking at typical sort of project management structures, we've drafted a document for your consideration. It would provide it in the committee's meeting packet for your regular November meetings, you would have it ahead of time. And now during this special meeting, we've set aside, we've got the next hour to discuss. To Martin's question about what would help me feel like we have what we need would be affirmation of this or an adjusted version of this plan. So if it feels like there are adjustments and clarifications that we can make together and go down a project plan before we leave, that would be amazing. We also don't need to force it if there's something that we need to go back and research and bring back to the committee for further discussion. Also, before we begin, I want to say that what this plan is not is, is investment specific. It doesn't call out what the focus area could or should be, but it gives us a structure to identify those potential focus areas. And there are hard copies in the room, so if somebody doesn't have one at the committee or guests, feel free to grab one. Makes sense so far? Okay. So, the 30,000-foot view, if you will, the document contains the following sections. An overview with purpose and objectives, so helping us get clarity about what it is we're trying to accomplish. Some background, which might feel a little extraneous, but was actually really helpful to me putting together to retrace the steps that we've taken from the concept and vision of this work to where we are now. putting together to retrace the steps that we've taken from the concept and vision of this work to where we are now. So that's a lengthy section with multiple subsections in it. And then a project schedule and project goals. My thought for the purpose of facilitating conversations is that we might just go section by section and discuss, starting with the big picture of, uh, purpose and objectives. See if what we wrote down captures, um, the sentiment of the committee, you know, if there are questions, we think it's our, or adjustments to make, because that's the right. So as our chair, um, Commissioner Martin Moore is, as our president sponsor, and the dates we threw on the, on the title, uh, took a liberty by starting this project plan last August, because that's when we really started the, um, funding investment series. Not everybody was sitting in, um, committee, uh, seat at this table. And I think that's when the focusing work really began. So at that time, we defined, um, and we've articulated further for you an overall purpose to define and implement a new focused funding strategy. So that's a really important stopping place to make sure that we have consensus, authority, um, will and support from the committee. Is this something that the committee is wanting to engage in to define and implement a new focused funding strategy? And if so, everything that follows will be how we get there.
I will get the second part of it, and if so.
The rest of the information that follows will be how we get there.
Yes.
I will do my best to speak out on this, it's challenging.
I promise that's a nitpick, every section.
You're invited, um, and if there are like, um, if there, if you have a markup with mistakes, it counts as simple to be there.
Fair enough. Um, just looking at the timeline and the sections here, and I think, uh, creating some space within the project dates and an additional section for project evaluation. That's a lot of the programs we're funding to provide evaluation. It seems like whether or not those investments are connected to our specific. So just building in some time and some metrics for us to know if it worked.
If we have been accomplishing the activities that were intended so far, if those have given us information, whether we should be continuing on the same path.
That part, the intended impact, sort of looking at the, the purpose and objectives, we have some high level things we're trying to accomplish. The theory for doing that, but not a way to do, um, is that, the application of that theory.
Thank you for that. Do, oh, somebody took a breath in.
I, it, excuse me, um, I mean, was that embedded in the, um, the bullet under project purpose on built on results to date? Is that meant to be results of the committee's, um, impl- implementation to date, and so it's not explicit, but is that meant to kind of be this evaluation?
I think we could, um, have, um, we wanna make good use of everything that we've learned so far and also continue going forward. To, to go back out to that big question. Does the committee want to carry out a project to define and implement a new focus funding? Global presentations?
Rachel. Rachel, I'm sorry, um, is there an understanding of the, um, the cost associated, the resource costs associated with this, um, project? That, 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 and grant funding?
That would be a good section, I think, to add. Um, this is neutral, I think there's not a section for cost. Many project plans have a resources needed section. Um, this is essentially a no cost project to carry out for the staff, until we contract something. You'll see later that we're proposing that there is some program design and development beyond what county staff will do. Um, what has been in the back of my mind is that the funding that sits in the current fund balance separate from the annual allocation would be sufficient to cover that, but I've not posted it. The closest, um, anyone might have to put a chat or speak up to give me the exact number, but the closest relevant contract would be what we funded to the development of the pre-K focused initiative, a couple of years, a couple three years of that. Um, for six months, which would be the same timing as this, um, we could pull that and estimate what all part of it. Angela, if you find that number, feel free to chime in. I'm reading the room as I have been leading up to now, and all signs are, please proceed.
Yes.
We like this, we like this path that we're on. Okay, so. We've defined a purpose and objectives, borrowing from, uh, previous committee conversations, that the product or end result of this project will be that new focused funding strategy. Um, and under the purpose, there's a set of bullets where, as you mentioned, Sarah, the, um, building on results to date. We also want to make sure, um, just something that we've been, Mark, or Heather said in this meeting already. What's our opportunity as the local government to influence this bigger early care and education system? We wanna take mention to that. We wanna respond to the current conditions, um, get exist within the field of early care and education and community themes. Um, that Beth and Sarah were pointing out, and Adrian, that we have already decided that community input is integral. Um, and we'll talk more about which, which sections of the community and how we would engage them. Um, grounded in practice, best practices from other communities and come up with something that um, both maximizes the impact that we think we can make as well as the ability to sustain over time. Questions, comments on purpose?
I mean, totally agree with the, with the points that are included there.
Um, I've had a lot of, uh, really insightful conversations with members of the field, uh, who work in early care and education, members of the committee. Um, Dr. Adrian, I certainly have borrowed some of the insight that you shared as well, so. Don't take credit for this, but glad that it feels on point. Objectives. This is a little bit more getting into the actions, so we would gather and analyze data on local needs, gaps, priorities, that work has been done and would continue. We would look at models for local government investment in early care and education. Engage those impacted populations that I was mentioning, be it families, providers, the business community, maybe the general public. Then establish funding priorities, which could include, because this is neutral to what the priority is. Could include something we already prioritized, could be a new priority. But we establish those along with performance measures so that out of the gate, when we launch the realignment, we have decided what we're gonna, um, what measures we're gonna monitor over time to assess whether we're successful. Um, and then implement, develop a multi-year funding and implementation. We'll have a start date for this, but it will take a multi-year timeframe, um, to be fully implemented. And hopefully we can leave this project with that in place.
Anyway, Rachel, one of, I was, I don't know what I was thinking about this the other day, but one of the things I'm wondering about the impact that we've had so far. And one of the things that would be helpful for me is to let's go back to the year we started and say, when this was the population we had. This is how much money we had, this is how much money we, you know, gave out, this was the enrollment, the current enrollment into early childhood that we know of. You know, and track those numbers annually throughout the year because we are hearing that enrollment has dropped.
Yep.
But I also think birth rate has dropped.
Yep.
And so it may not, we're making an assumption that people aren't putting their children into early childcare, but it could be that the child's not there to put them into childcare.
You make a good point that if we're going to build on our results to date, we have to be really familiar with them. And so, um, continuing to bring that information back in. An example of a system level measure that we came up with at the launch of this initiative was we would like more our children in care. And so we look at the total enrollment from zero to five each year, I think we pull it at the beginning of the school year. We look at total child population using census data and then come up with a percent enrolled. And that percent, even though, even when you factor for that decline in child population, um, has not increased. And we'll continue, but we don't want you to feel like you have the data well.
You know, I bet you're worried, every, you know, you can look at it easily.
Yeah.
You know, one of those things that's easy to find that we, we go back to the standard, not perfect, you know, and maybe you know, what is the parameter of cost for childcare? You know, these costs are big differential numbers and how much is this for, and for this location, this is at this location. And so maybe the top and a bottom number for those.
Good.
I wonder if we have, well, I don't wonder, we have childcare deserts out there, maybe mapping where our child centers are, including family home care, and we even have that anymore.
Thank you for those, I've captured all of those ideas about additional data that we have, that we can make sure we're continuing to keep front and center as well as the additional data we might go get to help. I see the screen moved on to project background. Any other questions and thoughts on objectives? Okay, so I'm gonna walk you through what's in the background, you've had this for, um, a few weeks. So I will not have made everything, but there is a section on the committee formation. Um, to keep us, again, one of our first purpose touchpoints is staying in line with what the commissioners set out for us to be doing when we first launched and we had this, um, resolution. We formed in twenty nineteen, and so since FY twenty, the annual funding recommendations for the grants have been produced by this committee, um, and voted on by the board of commissioners. And those strategies that are listed there have been with us since the start. Workforce, slots, enrollment, quality, support for families, and overall system support. So the things that I, are coming up as themes have been sort of on our radar stream, the degree to which the importance of, say, workforce or, um, behavioral and mental health support, um, which I think was maybe under family support at that time, has changed over time. Uh, and then there's a little bit about the kinds of grants that we've given. The purpose here was to, uh, help us remember and be able to explain the wide variety of programs we've had in this. So there's a list on the bottom of page one, the kinds of things that have been funded really as well. As you get to page two, there's a section on our focus on pre-K expansion, and.
Before you move on to this page, just looking at the priorities as they were, strategies as they were laid out in twenty twenty.
Yes.
I think it would be, must be helpful, um, for going forward, to consider whether for each of those, the overall consensus is, you know, was that successful, was that objective met, yes, no, or maybe by the strategy, by the strategies to date? You know, if, if, if there are clear answers to those, that could help inform, because some of those strategies may not be, we may not be able to impact some of those, or we may be able to impact some more than others.
I like where you're heading with that.
So, you know, uh, developing the easy workforce, I would say yes. I mean, I, I think.
It's a sort of, it's complicated, it's, we have some workforce development programs in place and pipelines for people to move along the their career path that didn't exist before.
Right.
A is way better today, um, for workers in the field, and also there's a bunch of vacancies.
There's one.
A lot of vacancies.
Yes, right, right, right. There's other factors maybe impacting.
That would be like a maybe on that one.
And the strategies were developed, did you have, did you say this is what success looks like?
We developed the success metrics at the system level rather than at the strategy level, and, um, as a result, I don't know that I could tell you what the metrics are right off the top of my head, although if we were to go through these, just as a sort of off the cuff demonstration, we certainly have data, and that's part of what Oaken Partnership brings in, how many people employed, average pay rate. Um, teacher turnover is something that we survey our providers twice per year. Um, so the funded organizations are giving us, um, those metrics that are at the project level. Um, the maintain and increase slots, we're maintaining. We're not increasing, uh, slots for enrollment, largely tied back to that workforce piece, and also largely tied to funding. Because even when there's features, it takes extra money beyond just with the the, like subsidy or the NC pre-K money alone can pay. Quality, we've talked about that being an area where we are in good shape overall in the system. There's a, like a trend line of quality, um, improving, that's a large, um, in large part due to improvements at the state, and they're, they are, they do tinker with that. Um, what is it, the Q R I S system, the star rating system. Um, but quality is in, in good shape. Um, family support isn't one of those, maybe it's a little mushier, I don't, I'm not sure what we would use to measure that. And the overall system have, has had some great investments, um, in coordination with breast centers. I was looking at the list that was in your packet for this meeting, um, of the names of centers and programs that have been helped through our partnership for children investments. There's a workforce development one, a healthcare resources one, and then the NC pre-K one, and the list of, um, look at Angela's system exactly, providing nicely. That's a lot of system support that is, um, happening as a result of this committee's investments. So we have some maybes and some yeses and one no.
Yeah.
But the overall thing that we've said, we want kindergarten readiness to go up. We want, because we know high quality childcare has already been, high quality childcare enrollment has already been improved in studies, to help with lots of, um, child development milestones, including kindergarten readiness, we want more children served to go from twenty-nine percent to, I mean, fifty percent. Those two system level measures, like we talked about a couple of years ago, those have.
Yeah.
So I'm then supposed to believe this?
Yes.
You can just give us the key. Yes, you can just give us the key, CCR, WDP, CAO, CWA.
I can tell you what those ones mean.
Let's hold it on the sheet so that when we read the sheet, we remember.
The column for CCR is the childcare and resources program. That's the one where they do training, technical assistance, coping for startups, for existing centers, for teachers, for certain directors. That's CCR. WDP is workforce development program. So they specifically put an X if a program used the substitute pool or hired somebody that came through that, the workforce development program, just so far this year. This is over three months. And then NC pre-K expansion. The other acronyms that are further down in the list are center names. So CAO is shorthand for community action opportunities. And CWA is shorthand for Christine W.
Sure, comment on that outcome data you were just talking through. And we've talked some about comparing ourselves to the statewide data. I think that probably helps us to look at, because we know that there are other areas that have some performance like we do. And so maybe around the state, all those numbers are going down, we're maintaining. And so that's actually that we are making a difference with this one. So I think comparing itself to ourselves is not always the best outcome measure.
We've heard an anecdote, and I think Yana might have said this during every presentation, like we prevented closures and that, you know, proving from the chip is a little tricky. Using comparisons could be very difficult.
I mean, it's not what we want, since we're just like, anyway. Well, we are making a difference with the thought, maybe isn't.
So please continue to speak up those things across your mind. We're still kind of recapping background. So there's a section on focusing on the pre-k expansion. This was a really cool project and putting together this history, I recalled. Thank you to the members of the board of commissioners who are in the room today. It came from the board of commissioners to the committee at that time. What would it look like to do universal pre-k? Could we have taken issue universal pre-k in books of money? And that's what spun off this subgroup and this studying. So we interviewed all of the other places in North Carolina that have a special initiative, looked at what is happening across the country. At that time, rather than proposing a new pre-k program, the recommendation of the committee was, well, we have a good pre-k program in our place in Moken County, as, as is true for rest state, NC pre-k. But it has some problems. There's gaps within that program. The reimbursement rate isn't great. It's really hard for new providers to get in. Families don't have after school, like it closes in the summer, it closes on spring break, closes at typically. So what if we hitch our wagon to NC pre-k and try to fill the gaps within that? We launched that, we paid for it for the first two years out of ARPA one-time money with American Rescue Plan Act, which is federal, then local control. After those two pilot years ended, that became an application and then a grant within the fund. So as of FY25 and now also in FY26, that pre-k expansion project is one of the 20 projects in the fund. So we have an example of doing focused investments. And so now as we consider additional focused investments, I wanted to give credit to the research and the work that we were doing. I'm happy to spend time with anyone individually if you want to get caught up on some of this information. And we'll continue trying, to Stacy's point, to try to make sure that we're visiting it as a group and making it available to you. We did a 24 and then 25 dive into information about early care and education in general, how licensing works, what quality is looking like, data in context. We looked at funding, to your point about what money goes into the system, what does childcare cost? Based on setting, based on type, based on age. We reviewed our current strategy and the impacts. We talked about program level results and system level results. We started talking about different kinds of investments and, and impacts. And looking at some trends and, and people have begun throwing ideas out there for discussion. What if we focused on X or Y? So that brings us to how we will go about this. So on the timeline.
First, I can give us the extra word all on the same page. So the intent of this section is just to contextualize the history of this group and where we bit and where we're going. So we're not necessarily making decisions about what we're trying to fund this focused investment. So to my colleagues, is there anything else in the contextual section that would be helpful to clarify this focused investment? Why this shift now?
So I was curious how it landed for you as a new member. One of the tricky things about youth artists is you've got people coming on and rotating off. That part of it, I thought, contextual.
Yeah, it is super useful. I think the only thing would be just seeing this moment reflected, which I think as, as this moment becomes part of the history. But why the shift now when there have been some investments more broadly? I think we're hearing some of those were from sort of like, wasn't effective, it hit, it sounds compared to other places. So I'm curious if any of that feels relevant, necessary for a project? To lay out the logic.
There's a little bit here on the very bottom two that reflects that while we do have solid information about program or project specific performance, there seems to be little data that's been data about the impact of the investments at a community one level. It might be enhanced by adding some of those things that have surfaced through recent site visits around staffing shortages, mental health needs, space, I mean, space capacity, et cetera. Where we can't done page one, then we want to make sure that it responds to current conditions, it might things in particular.
I would appreciate that. That part is in coming on the committee three grant cycles ago. Those strategies of like developing early childhood workforce, increasing quality, supporting families, always bothered me that we were trying to make decisions with money as a committee and we didn't really understand exactly what we were aiming for. So I would appreciate that in this new draft, if we were very specific around what that would look like, because I can see how slots are affected by teacher retention, you know, and so it gets complex and I understand that, but also it seemed vague.
And didn't I hear somewhere where the STAR rating qualifications changed?
There is some change at the state level. We've heard a little bit about that, and I know some site visits talked about the I think that the campus, the representative from D to DE, that there are more than one path to all the eight points. Tinker, they tinker with it.
Like to know that that would be, because that, that would be interesting to know.
For our document, I wrote down, specify some of what has been hard to manage and name some current conditions. Any other suggestions?
Well, and you know, one of the things that we've heard is that some folks because of the cost of childcare, that some folks have chosen not to go back to work after endemic or halloween or whatever disaster affected their family that we had in Moken County. And I don't know that there's any way to measure that at all whatsoever. But I think that's just something that we need to have floating out there. And families that were two income, two income families have chose not to.
Certainly could be included as part of the current context post pandemic workforce.
Yeah, I mean, my request would be to keep it really grounded in the intent of this group. I mean, we're talking about the landscape of early education, really getting into like dynamic systems. There's so much that could go into it. It's basically like a planet. This little lever here, and so many things happen over here. And that's just like, that really is a tool we're going to have access to or be able to build. So like, I'd be hesitant to like list so many things in here. Versus like, we looked at the number of childcare spots early on. Here's what we saw when we started the fund. Here's where they were five years later and part, and that formed a little bit of a drift to this. Just those sort of points of thought.
I see the list of them, because we tend to get into the weeds when we start talking about income, jobs and things.
Yeah, there are some good tools. There are like cost modeling there that folks are working on for, I think, partnership work on the Children's Funding Project, around the inception of this work. So there, there are some tools out there that are already in this. So that we don't need to, yeah, and could give us a little more at length. But I think, again, like shifting us into this timeframe, that's why I think building it in the positive period would be really crucial to be able to dig into some of these like deeper systems questions that have to be compared with other things and are a little more challenging to split the quarter.
I was with Emily Nicholson, a member of this committee right before the nature sensor regrets. I had to leave the meeting that she was hosting to get over here, but she asked, would there be any opportunities for like subgroups? And I think that when it gets more specific and technical and complex, that might be a good speaker. Okay, so a little more information about the results of the system level measures we've been tracking. A little bit of specificity of what has been part of your though we're staying, but not too long, but some current conditions, the current strategies moving smoothly. All right, time, schedule. There's two columns. Because what we are proposing is we hold a grant cycle on the left for continuity during the plan. Putting all of this on the map, on the, on the calendar to Joe, to answer your question from two meetings ago, how long do we have to make a shift? It takes a minute. Implementing a shift by July 1, 2026 is too fast. But we think it's possible to implement by July 1, 2027, which is our start of our FY28. So down the far left, you've got what's happened, what activities are happening in fiscal year 26, and then it starts with November, which is where we are today. So if we proceed with this plan, staff will get going on developing grant guidelines for a funding cycle. We recommend it be largely unchanged from prior years. So that the application is familiar and the process is familiar, except for those of you who are new to the committee, and this will be your first time doing grant picking. And run that, if we stay in the, the sort of the left of the two columns, we would bring you some grant guidelines in December to approve, and we'd open the applications at the beginning of June. It would be open until February 20th. And the committee would do their review. There's a scoring tool and a scoring software. Did you just have a visceral reaction? And make recommendations. Our budget office is asked to have those in hand by April 17th so that they can get them in the commissioner's draft budget, which they receive in May and approve in June. And then we get, I think it's the first Tuesday in June. That way we have pretty much the month of June to be working with all the providers to get the contracts ready so they can manage. And then we run through fiscal year 27 and collecting those and reviewing these final reports. Maybe doing the site visits again. Me alongside that, back to the top, running a parallel process from this focused investments project. In November, we hosted a roundtable, so give ourselves credit for that. If you, if, I don't mean or someone I say you, it means y'all. If y'all feel ready to vote to approve a project plan, that's when slated. Again, we can adjust if we need more time. We're proposing that the next session would be to host other counties in December and January that are investing in early care and education. Maybe we make it a virtual session for ease of participation. Charlotte Mecklenburg has come up as a model we want to really look at and learn more about. And there are three other counties that are doing some version of it. We've looked at a comparison of their models, but get refreshed over the next, those months. And by February, be ready to discuss focus areas to be scoped. We could start that in, there's a little flex here. Your reaction, we've dropped this in February. That would be when maybe we won't really use post-it notes and sticky notes, but maybe we will. And someone writes down on it, I really want to keep, keep the pre-k as the pre-k investment as one of our focused investments. Maybe someone writes the one that we heard. One show, three-year-old investment. Maybe somebody writes down, do an infant program. Maybe someone does, writes down one that says like age neutral, we want to do a mental health supplement, or I want to do a supplement. We get our ideas. Have to kind of chill in March and April because we're going to be doing funding recommendations for the year. We come back up for air and look at our focus areas to be scoped in May, June and choose I can't remember if it said it on this document, but choose a small number of focus areas and have an expert firm that knows a lot about assessment tools and curricula and all kinds of things, cost modeling to scope it for us. Oh, I skipped an important one. Back in January, in addition to December and January, we can be doing initial surveys of providers in the community. So we've got that information in the spirit. We already gathered ideas from your survey questions.
Just wondering if with survey fatigue and whether would be input that, you know, has already and is obtained in a sort of continuing way just through dialogue, whether it really needs to be or whether there's enough benefit to, to warrant another provider survey and a more formal kind of community survey?
I think that this could be an area where it could be a good spinoff group to talk about that. Our Cape Communications and Public Engagement Office warned us that there is survey fatigue. And it's really important that we figure out how to be grounded in input to effective parties. So maybe we could post a time and then people come in and we make note of what they say. Instead of the actual survey, there's different ways to do it, but Instead of the actual survey, there's different ways to do it, but some additional input at this time seems necessary for how we carry out business at the county and also for. So we're thinking we can do that during this implementation. Maybe parents survey. We would be asking providers, both teachers as well as directors, different questions probably than we need.
I'm sorry. Well, I just wanted to add, like even looking at those dates, I was starting to also, you know, a little anxious. Because like just for that meeting, it seems like summer, January has the host, the NC counties input and the survey information. And then we just have that one February meeting to discuss focus areas. And I, I found myself wondering if our committee can really be that focused in one meeting. So I was like wondering about January, February. So just filling it out.
Just want to have May to talk about focus areas.
I'm worried we'll lose momentum to be honest and get scattered in our thinking again. I've noticed that like sometimes we, we come back. Sure. It's like we're retracing our steps again and yeah, yeah.
So Heather's suggesting in December, we host other, other NC counties. In January, we discuss focus areas to be scoped and also. We could also move the surveys all to happen during January. However, I want to provide your surveys down before they have to think of. Because of how they answer.
Do you think it might not be more strategic to do provider surveys and community surveys once there is more of a sort of a an idea or set of ideas that is really rising to the fore as our strategy is our way forward? And then you get some feedback more specifically on those ideas rather than, you know, kind of opening it up.
Are we asking for input at the front end? Are we asking for feedback on the draft? Both serve a free value, right?
A source of mind that, as you know, the, thinking of ways to trim the process. Because, you know, it is a long duration here and it's, it's complex. So you're just thinking of ways to be more efficient.
That was going to be my similar point. I think if we, in keeping in line with the project's purpose, just prioritizing the community input, we can have a general sort of like community input placeholder throughout those months. Knowing that some, some company will design the, the correct approach and tool and methodology for capturing that. Naming it as part of the process, but not being so specific in here that it is a survey that is going this time. For the purposes of approving this plan, just to.
So the places where community input would show up now, if I just switch forwarding, would be December slash January. And then again, in this six-month window of time, July through December.
Designing and implementing community. Long here. January.
Does anyone feel antsy about that?
Still clarifying, just if we are switching to like more of a multi-year funding strategy, a little unclear is like when that starts and what that looks like.
So I stopped talking because I realized and I went back and up, but it skipped something. So if you look back at where we would be in say, May or June, we would say, we've selected these focus areas that we want to have scoped out. We would have a, a third-party contractor in a six-month contract from July through December delivering that. Then we would have some costs and some program design in so that it's much more tangible for the community to see. Okay, if we spend this much, these are the results we can reasonably expect to get. And we would make that decision in January and February. That could be a little bit more clear. Select. We review the program designs and select which ones that are moving forward this. And then we still need someone to do it. And so whomever is in the business of the thing that we say we want to specialize in since the image of health and promise of voice for all. Then that vendor would need to some time to put together their proposal to then be reviewed in March and recommended in April. And then started in July. The third party.
Contractor needs six months to do this? To do this, because that's a big chunk of time that we're giving them. And then it kind of crunches that other six months.
I'm worried about launching something very complex. Like last time it was thinking about how the NC pre-K program could be augmented at a local level. And so they did a lot of they aged a subcontractor to do data analysis. There were focus groups with providers and like participants that designed various elements of the. And used. So not knowing what it is we're going to ask to be scoped. Two questions, go ahead.
First, back to the question before. So this year remains, this upcoming year or make decisions remains a handle. That the multi-year grants would start with the focus investment.
I think that's the in inference, maybe we should be more explicit.
And then what do you need from the committee in terms of the third-party contract? Is it just a gauge of your contractors there?
It's probably something that would be staff and then potentially a committee would sit on like an RFP, if you will, for project proposals. We say, we're looking for a vendor to do this. And then if there are more of them out there that can do it, they submit their proposals and have criteria and then make a selection. Could be involved in this contract. And also it's something that staff can carry through that.
Because it seems like to the point earlier about shifting up determination of focus area discussion prior to the application review, give some time for staff to then do some selection. Which could allow for an earlier start. Six months be the last three this fiscal year. I know that's also having applications. But if the committee's not, it's an option to start putting.
I'm with you. I appreciate your feedback as a person of projects at this time. To some extent, we will have to evaluate every couple of months since, you know, it's growing and see if this is still if there's, we have to.
Similar comment to Joe, and I thought that if we were going to be, as a committee discussing the focus areas in January or December, January, no, January, February, could we move up the engagement of the third-party contractor to spring? And so that we may have the program designs to actually review sometime in late summer or fall, August, September, when you say it's rather than waiting until January 27th. Just gives us more of an opportunity then to again sort of transition of implementation.
I think it's as sprint as proposed over this full 18 months. Would you be comfortable seeing if we're able to strip the timeline once we're going rather than constraining it now?
Yeah, I mean, I'm entirely comfortable. However, it looks like it would be most feasible, you know, all kinds of competing staff.
I do think it's feasible when I say it's a sprint, that that's not, we can handle that. There are some additional pieces in here that we just want to make sure that we're taking good care of. Like we have a couple of providers in the room and they've got their hair to the ground. But one of the things that Martin and I were hoping to everybody to stay informed and those of open engagement. And that we engage with enough time to actually change our plan based on what they say, if we hear meaningful feedback, et cetera. Given the time, I'm going to move us on in a moment. People who haven't spoken of Carol or Commissioner Horton or Pam. Anyone feel like telling me?
I would like to say I appreciate Kelly's staff for preparing such a thorough document. And I think it sums up what this committee and maybe Heather and I probably have a little bit more time to digest of the desire to go into more of a focus strategy versus the broader approach. Not to ignore the fact that I think a shift in funding strategy will impact people within our community. And so just to make, call that out, because I do think when you focus, there are going to be individuals who have received funding that won't no longer receive funding potentially. And, and so I appreciate giving time and another funding cycle for providers to adapt. But I do appreciate staff's work on this. And I think it's the right direction for the fund to go this.
Did anyone else wish to take another one?
Second that, does it mean a second?
I'll accept it most of them. I wanted to show you the project rules. I might suggest here that we have like, you know, early childhood committee slash potential subcommittees or working slash potential working groups. We'll know it when we get there. When we've got a topic that feels like it needs to spin out in a bigger meeting and have worked done by committee members in between. But in general, we've got the committee approving this project plan, approving the grant guidelines next month. Reviewing the FY 27 applications and recommending the FY 27 awards in the spring. Selecting which, which focused investments we're going to go out and get scoped. And then approving, when I say grant, I have entered FY 28 here. That's like approving with the focus. And then the proposals and awards in that new focus in the air now. And then we list here what staff will help carry out to make this happen. I guess, Martin, the question for the committee is would you like to see these modifications being more explicit in the why now kind of section before voting on the progress? So will the committee want to vote on the project and vote that things will be added?
What would be least instructive to you? Is there anything that doesn't really change the net? Proceedively, as we get on here to the top here.
Moving to code one, project plan, those caveats, would be great.
I'll make a note of these by the fact. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, Pat.
I thought it, I thought it aye.
Thank you. So y'all, I just wanted to take a moment, especially since we don't have public comments to my knowledge and recognize one, thank you staff for opening a lot of tremendous work. And to you. Raise your hand if you're in public comment. Great. I need no objections. Good. If I'm on board. I think this is a really big moment. We've had a lot of touchpoints over the past few years. I've been lucky to serve on a pre-existing board. But I really think this is a good sense of direction for where we've been or at different places in the life span of different companies in our county. And it's going to keep changing, but I think this will give us some meaningful way of tracking the impact that we're having. Because I think everyone knows that there is an opportunity and a window for impact in this early childhood space. But what that looks like on paper versus us feeling better going to be two of things sometimes. So if we can make those overlap a little bit better, I think we'll take on momentum with that. Feel really good about the work we've done. So thank you to a lot of people who are in this room. And thank you to Al for being the first who's in the room from the beginning.
Can we put on the agenda for next time, a brief discussion on grant recipients that might not be using their grant money the way they requested to use it?
Let me think about that. You literally just described putting someone on blast in a public meeting.
Would you be willing to reach out to the chairman or me down in the next talk?
Let's go, let's have a chat beforehand.
Our next meeting is in two weeks because this will be a special meeting. So thank you, everybody, for fitting in and having to meet in this one. We'll bring the grant guidelines to review in some time.
All right, I'll move to you.
And I have parking validation to avoid.